I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just and eternal. Okay, welcome everyone to the May 1st meeting. Okay, the minutes of April 17th, we have a motion to approve the minutes. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report payment of bills, we have a motion to approve the financial report?
So moved.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now the administration of the office. Chief, you're on, let's do it. We've got a couple new officers, love to see this.
We do have a couple, unfortunately, one was late.
He's here. Oh wait, he's here. He's coming.
Oh, someone else was late.
We're really on time.
And that's what we do.
We do.
So, I'd like to introduce the four additional members of our office. Um.
Mayor.
Your mayor.
Justice Valentine and Artura Madilla.
An award.
So Artura Madilla has been attending the Baltimore City Police Academy and he graduates Friday night. And so he's currently in our field training program. He comes to us, he's living in Delaware now, he's down to something.
What's your step, Chief?
And then, also Valentine comes to us, he had been with Baltimore City, graduated from their academy and was in Rockville. And now he's living in Delaware with his fiancee. And has joined us. So he's Maryland certified already and he's just gone to the Blue Gate program with us. So, the addition of these two, that brings our total to forty-six police officers. So we're almost at full staff, and we're pretty excited about that.
Right. We're ready.
Will do most at the same time?
Not too much.
Okay, guys, if I could get you to raise your right hand, please. And repeat that name, and I'll say your name.
Ari Torneo.
Do you swear in a firm?
Do swear in a firm.
That I support the Constitution of the United States?
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and fair?
That I will be faithful and fair.
True allegiance to the state of Maryland?
True allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
To support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality?
Without partiality.
Or prejudice?
Or prejudice.
Execute the office of police officer?
Execute the office of police officer.
According to?
According to.
Constitution?
Constitution.
And laws of the state?
And laws of the state.
Welcome aboard. Guys, you want to stand up behind us?
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, we're good. Come on, the rose between two thorns. All right, Andy Rodriguez, come on down. I think we have the first quarter awards. You know, you know something, before we go any further, I want to take a couple seconds, and would you introduce our newest member of our team over here to the left?
So to the board and to the whole town, I'd like to introduce our new Director of Finance, Tamika Hannah.
Tamika, we just put you right in there without moving forward, but that's what, that's the way we roll. Glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to start off with the employee of the quarter, and the reason why I have Director Mary McGahl here is because it's one of her employees. So, wanted to announce that employee of the quarter, the first quarter, is Chaney Hudson. This leads us to a point. What, what the committee, when we read the nomination and what everyone was, like, unilaterally agreed upon was, the amount of work that she puts into the resident guide is tremendous. And work, and rework, and rework, and rework. And it's done, everyone said it's done professionally, and just amazing work, and I just wanted to hand it off to Mary, since I don't make any other comments.
No, I, Chaney does this every year, on top of everything else that she has to do. And she makes it a priority to get it done, and she is able to work with everybody in town to get this project accomplished. So it's not something that she's doing on her own, she has to work with every single department to get this done, multiple people within every department, so it's a lot of effort and a lot of time, and I just really felt that she should be recognized for continually doing this every year, with really not a lot of recognition for it, so it's, I appreciate what you've done for her.
You know, I'd like to say that the, we've evolved on our, on our guide, you know, it was, I don't know how many years ago, I was in College Park, and I got to throw a little kudos out to, the city of College Park is where we kind of got that idea, the community guide, and we took it to a whole new level. And I appreciate all the efforts, and it's, it makes a difference with our community. They love seeing that community guide. Has a lot of great information, if they would read it all the time, they'd know.
Very good. Chaney, I want to say.
Thank you, Chaney.
Thank you, Chaney, for putting up with me.
Chaney, just come up here and stand in front of us, if you wouldn't mind, right there, Louis will get a picture up there. Mary, come on up here with it, Mary. There we go, Louis will get us all in there, all smiles.
I want to make sure everybody's smiling, because we're going to want to eat frowns today. Okay, hang on a minute, got to get apple food.
All right. There we go.
All right, big smiles.
God loves apple. Got it.
All right.
So we've got quite a few more pictures.
All right, we have some milestone awards, is that in my hands now, or was that something?
This is the service awards, I just want to mention, the following employees, Danielle, this is the employees that reached a milestone in the first quarter, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. So this individual, I don't believe that's here, but I want to recognize Crossing Guard James Yoder, who celebrated his fifth year with the town. Okay, and Kathleen, Kathleen? Hi, Kathleen. Kathleen, that is a tie, you graduated, do you want to pitch?
We're going to get her picture.
Are you going to be with everybody?
Want to just do it at the end?
Uh, we can have, yeah.
Let's have a whole group hug.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Where are you going?
Is Mr. Aaron Holmes in the audience?
Yes.
This gentleman celebrates ten years, town boss. Ladies and gentlemen.
All right. Aaron, no good job, I'll get you a picture.
Gary, aka Jeff Klein, ten years. Okay, this is a big one. Lieutenant Ron Odom, twenty-five years. You've extended the draw to ten years. So I think you all, if you don't mind standing, Louis George is going to take your picture. Town administrator is the best photographer here in the town.
Yeah, sure. I'm almost as tall as these guys. Okay, here we go, guys. One, two, three, four.
And one more this way. There you go. Thank you.
All right. Now, the only thing I'd like to add to that, and you're missing a few, I want to stress that you're missing a few.
I'm sorry.
So, with thirty years of service to the town of Elton, I'd like to compliment Commissioner Givens for thirty years. And I'd like to also say that Commissioner Piner at twenty years. And Commissioner Brummel with twenty years. A few years ago, we nominated Commissioner Givens for the Municipal League Hall of Fame for Elected Officials after he served twenty years. And my understanding, I think the only other one was Jim Kraus and Charles Givens, and we got two more that'll be inducted in this, in June, which will be Gene and Earl. Looking forward to the event. Thank you.
Thank you.
You congratulated Charles on thirty years of service, but which thirty years?
I know.
The first ones or the last ones?
I guess the last ones.
I'm really sorry, that's a little, Harold, you take care of it.
The first item I have is the Artesian Water Agreement.
Congrats, man.
Thank you, sir.
Joe Nondio was here last week, and, or last meeting, and discussed terms with the board, and I haven't got any comment since that time, so I'm going to ask the board to approve this agreement so we can proceed with the interconnection process. It's going to take quite a while to do this, because I'm engineering, even though it's not completed, but close to it, it has to be bid out and everything, but it'll take them a year or more to do their end, so this might be a year and a half, two-year project.
Do we have a motion to accept the interconnect agreement with Artesian or Route Forty? Second. We've got a motion, a second, any discussion?
I just wanted to thank the board for covering my concerns at this meeting. I really appreciated it and feel better about moving forward.
Thank you, Gene. The only comment I would like to make is that we're moving forward with an extra interconnect, and a lot of things that we, we don't know as a community when it comes to our drinking water, is that I keep bringing up the word the P Fosses. And, you know, we have some P Foss issues in one of our wells, and the way that these P Fosses work is they just get into the aquifer, and they could affect a lot of our wells. And we just need to be, this is just another avenue that we're doing to make sure that the people of the town of Elton have a consistent quality of drinking water, is for sure. But to add to that, I want to make sure that, we put a little bit, we want to keep this thing, the amount of water that we pool from Artesian, we want to keep it as close to the contract number as possible. What we're seeing is that on Saturday and Sundays, we pool a lot more water from Artesian than we, than we need to be. So Lou, I'm asking you maybe to make sure that Infomarc pays attention, that when it says that we're pulling two-hundred-and-fifty thousand gallons, that we keep close to that mark. We don't need to blow that number away on the weekends, because that's added cost to our residents. I would appreciate that, thank you. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Next up, Lou.
Okay, next item I have is, I'm sorry, Ordinance Three, and I think that's my partner here, who's going to comment on the Ordinance Three.
Ordinance Three, the purpose of Ordinance Three amends the code of the town of Elton, and establishes the process by which property owners are notified of delinquent water, sewer, and trash collection services. This here and after is called utility billing, that's part of the purpose of this. Previously, in the old system, a delinquent water customer received that red tag on their door. Also, the property owner was the only one that received the bill. Under our new system now, those red tags go away. A delinquent bill goes to the property owner, however, a copy of that bill now goes to a renter or someone else who occupies that, that property.
The service address.
The service address. So, really, Ordinance Three just corrected our language in our code. Additionally, the fifty-dollar late fee is defined on those bills as well, so that's really pretty much all that Ordinance Three does, is clarify language for delinquent payments and billing.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept Ordinance Three dash twenty-two-four?
So moved.
So this is for adoption, so we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next one I have is Ordinance Four, which sends the board, involves livestock. It amends the codes, draft of six-two-zero-eight, keeping of livestock, to allow property owners with fifteen or more acres to actually have animals on their property. This was prompted by fifteen or nineteen acre parcel. In town, there were some rescue horses that were kept, along with a couple chickens here and there. And it didn't seem logical that a person with that much property couldn't house a few animals, versus the ordinance which prohibits them at all. I think when the ordinance was originally created, drafted, it, it was concerning residential neighborhoods, where there are small lots, obviously you can't have pigs, cows, horses, chickens, et cetera, et cetera, on small lots throughout the town. But property that exceeds fifteen acres certainly has no bar from the proper care of animals, I don't think. So I would suggest that the board introduce this, or accept its introduction, to allow property owners with that much property to have certain animals on their, on their property. Also prohibits the, any hazardous conditions, including animal waste and things of that nature too, so, deodorants and waste products from animals, other than now the overshooting of course, is prohibited.
We have a motion to accept Ordinance Four dash twenty-two-four, keeping of livestock, presented for introduction purposes only. So, have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on this? It's for introduction only. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next one, proclamation forty-three, forty-three, that's two thousand twenty-four. Where the National Park Trust, a non-profit organization dedicated to serving parks today, creating park stewards for tomorrow, is dedicated May eighteenth, as the fourteenth annual National Kids to Parks Day. Where National Kids to Parks, they empower and encourage their children, and their families to visit parks and spaces involving their appreciation of nature's beauty and diversity. And whereas it's important to introduce children to the national or local parks, to encourage their exploration of these natural wonders, while allowing a pathway to lead more active lifestyles, reducing childhood obesity, and many other conditions often accompanying inactive lifestyle. Whereas National Kids to Parks Day is an invitation to children and adults to participate on a special day, opening the horizon full of interesting things to see, experience, and capture their imagination. And therefore, the mayor commission of the town of Elton, their life, will play May eighteenth, as Kids to Parks Day.
Do we have a motion to approve proclamation P forty-three dash twenty-two-four, Kids to Parks Day?
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on that at all? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That Kids to Parks Day started early with Commissioner Massimiano's rodeo, Edward's Fun, which was a resounding success of the honest thing.
Yes, sir.
So that was the Kids to Parks Day, special event, question about it.
Well, listen, saying that, Rob, go ahead and tell us a little bit about the rodeo.
The rodeo was a huge success. For the fourth year in a row, we've had record numbers, up to two-hundred-and-twenty, was it, Mary?
Two-hundred, yeah, pre-registered.
Pre-registered. Who knows how many showing up on the side, but it didn't matter, we handled it all. We didn't run short on anything, really. We were right down to the wire then, weren't we, at the end? The weather was great. What's that?
I think you had one hot dog left there, we're fighting.
There was one hot dog left.
No.
And the addition of the casting course was a lot of fun, there would be a few tweaks to that next year. And the mayor presented an idea to me that I would love to share with y'all, and that's that we set up a tent, and actually show the kids how to clean the fish, and then we'll cook them for them, right on the spot. We'll just make it a little pond-to-plate action.
I think to add to that, I think what we'll do, to add to that, would be, we'll just pre-purchase maybe, I don't know, maybe a...
Bunch of perch.
A bunch of perch, and we'll have a fish fly down there on that day, and I think it would be a nice little touch. Not only are you showing the kids how to bait their fly, how to cast, how to catch, but also that we, not all the time that you do this to release them, but you need to also show them that this is something that they can have as food.
And we also try to teach them, we try to teach them how to teach, handle the fish respectfully, you know, and not leave trash and stuff, which I got to say, the whole town has been fantastic. When it's all over, and we make a run around the pond to pick up trash, very much. But really, my thanks goes out to everybody, Mary, and Parks and Rec and Public Works, of course, just the whole town was involved, and I really appreciate it.
The only comment I had, that morning, when I walked out there, and we knew that there was going to be well over two-hundred people, over two-hundred kids, that maybe our pond wasn't large enough. So Lou, could you take a look and see if there's any way you can combine those couple ponds? There's a couple ponds by the water treatment facility that's not being used. Can they be connected?
They're established weapons, so...
Oh, they are?
Yeah, by the wall.
Okay, well, I was looking at them, I see water going through them from the overflow, and I thought, well, maybe if there was a way that you could connect one of those ponds into the other pond, maybe it would...
Be about the only way to enlarge it. Of course, they do fish that separate pond.
They do, yeah, they're fishing there.
They're racing.
That's good.
Maybe make it deeper.
Anything else?
Nah, that's all I have is...
Earl?
I have much to say, except for congratulate Rob, job well done.
Job well done.
Thank you.
Charles?
A number of things, I guess. Tomorrow, basically, is the National Prayer Day service, that's at noon, at Central Presbyterian Church. Want to give congratulations to the new finance director for coming on board, certainly it's very impressive, and certainly, we do need you in a dire need of time right now. Of course, everybody up here understands that dire need of time, for all the things that we have to do, and yet, to be accomplished. And Chief, thank you for your perseverance of getting officers into the town of Elton and on your staff, because I remember going back to two thousand fifteen, when we were really searching out, and now you're back up to almost the complete numbers that's needed. Make you sleep easier at night, when you've got patrol out there. And that's basically it.
Gene?
Um, I wanted to thank the Alliance for an absolute wonderful evening of excellence, for a tribute to the Citizen of the Year and the Business of the Year. It was awesome, thank you for that. Cinco de Mayo, of course, is coming up this Friday, and I'm sure these ladies might be talking about it, so. My only thing is, on By Sunny's, on North Street and Main, alongside her building, we currently have one parking spot. And I was looking at it, and I was wondering if we could perhaps get two more out of that area. If it was painted off, I think it would increase, you know, the availability of parking. So, if Dan could look into that?
Dan, maybe you can take a look at the request from the commissioner?
Yes, I'll look into it.
Thank you, I know you can get at least one more, but I'm curious if you can squeeze in two more.
Can I tack on to that? Talking about marking off parking spots, I think all of the parking spots on Main Street could be repainted, street and curb. It's hard to see them when people park out of them, so it messes everything up.
Okay, yeah.
Take a look at all of them, Dan.
We're mini now, so we're mini Main Street, okay.
Perfect.
Awesome. And my last comment is, Mayor, you were talking about Artesian and the P Foss and whatever, but is there going to be a time where we can discuss the possibility of us drilling, drilling new well? I would really like for that to be at least up for discussion. I mean, as the town grows, why are we not trying to grow?
Because you draw from an aquifer, and putting a new well in from the same aquifer will get the same result, and it'd just be, costs a million dollars to do it, and, or more. And one of the things we're doing now with well number three is exploring the use of granulator, trangulated farben to clear P Foss from the water. And that's going to be a very expensive project to do, because the cost of that treatment is very, very expensive, but it is effective, and it's the only effective treatment for it. I'm not sure, we drilled additional wells, for two and for five, and they were roughly a million and a half.
Well, I'm not, I shouldn't have said anything about the P Foss, because my, the reason I brought it up was actually for quantity, availability of additional water.
To draw more from the aquifer.
Yeah, rather than pay for what's being drawn from our aquifer.
I think we're five hundred a day, and we cover a thousand a day, and eight hundred monthly maximum use from well three. I don't know if we get more out of there or not. We have to initiate a engineering study, and submit it to MDE for determination, and then coordinate with EnRec, because we're sharing the same aquifer that, ironically, that Artesian draws from.
And that's my point.
But that, we could, that's...
Okay, but I mean, I'd like to at least have...
I'm not going to hesitate, because it's very hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that, and it'll come out of the sewer, and we're funded, and...
Well, and hopefully, we're also requesting some kind of capital improvement.
Yeah, that's a major silly, my...
Plan, so, maybe that'll all come into it or not, I just want to put it out there for discussion.
Louis, is there a study on how much...
Louis, is there a study on how much our aquifer can provide?
Not that I'm aware of. I know that we're permitted by the environmental program for the amounts of water that we add, but the how an aquifer, not only amount of water, but how it's sustained for certain levels. Because you can have a confined body of water that you can draw from, or you can have more, larger area pools from that aquifer that's sustainable over ponds because of the rainfall, things of that nature. So it isn't as easy to, it's not like a swimming pool, you just fall from it, it goes away. Actually, it has to have rain to sustain it. So I'm not sure we could, I could send a letter to the Maryland Environmental and ask them if the state has conducted any analyses for the sustainment of that aquifer we draw from. And I could do that and see what happens.
That would be...
Rosado would be a big gasp, but they may have done something that I'm not aware of.
Okay, I just saw where Ortizian drew a new well. I guess that's what sparked my inquiry. Thank you.
I had two other things I forgot to...
Yeah, go ahead, Charles.
One thing I did forget to mention, because I was writing these down, Rob Massimiano, thank you for your effort and initiative in the rodeo. Hope you continue with your success, and it's grateful sometimes to receive ideas each year that you do it, because somebody certainly is going to come up, and Rob, thank you for advising him and others to make it even better, because it stands out for the town of Elton, not just one individual way. You're the person, point person on this, and we'd like to see that happen. Gene, your points, it's well done about the parking spots alone downtown. But some kind of way, I think we need to scrutinize who's parking downtown, because if you bring up another spot or two spots, you still have some of the business owners downtown picking those spots up. I ride through there quite often, and I see some of the same people who have businesses sitting there all day. I was talking with Margie about that coming in, you know, there needs to be some kind of way, certainly, Chief, we don't have any Clarimays or anybody else, as Earl was a volunteer sometimes, but we need to find a way to do that.
That's a good point, Charlie. I mean, even if we did find two more spots, we could put one hour limit on their spots to start, see how it works.
Well, I do have a crossing guard who's interested in our hours. I just, it's something we just need to discuss, but that's what we want to do with the support of enforcement.
Wow, good, thank you.
I think we should. I had three items that I hadn't brought up yet. Lou, I know that you've been sending emails back and forth about the Minnehans property, but there's not certainly a day that doesn't go by, and I get tired. You can see how hoarse I am? I think it's all about talking about the Minnehans building. And I know that you've sent the emails to the Minnehans family, trying to keep us up to date on exactly what's happening. I would ask if you could possibly send a letter, or have someone send a letter to the state, who is the mortgager of that property, and state to them that this is causing us a lot of hardship in the town of Elton, and that we expect maybe the state to take action on them, or the state to take action to put that roof on that building. Because if any debris falls onto anyone, I want to make it very clear, I believe it's the state of Maryland's fault right now, as well as the Minnehans family. The town of Elton's doing everything we can to keep the fence around it, but I get asked all the time, well, why don't we put a roof on it? Well, when there's several hundred thousand dollars owed on a property, and the town was to put a roof on to that property, we would be in second position on a property that's worth nowhere near the value of that, and we'd just be giving away money, and it's not the right thing to do. But I would say, if we could put a little pressure on the state. Now, adding to that, this has not been confirmed to me, other than what I saw on social media, of all places, but there's a bond bill that has been presented, and it looked like it was presented by Senator Hershey and Delegate Grist, and neither of them has reached out to me to make me aware, I'm assuming they haven't talked to anyone from the board, that they are asking for $800,000. I'm assuming it's a grant of some sort for them to get that building, I guess, stabilized and move forward with the project of putting, bringing the restaurant back into multi-units. But once again, I'm unaware of it, I saw it on social media. I don't know really what to do about that building. If there's any suggestions from the board, we can, we can get a court induced order for them to do something, but the fact is, if they don't have the money, how are they going to get it done? John, is there any suggestions what we could do? I've had enough of it, I want to do something if we can.
Let me give it a little bit more thought then, but I think if you're not hitting it right on the head, you can't force them to spend a half a million dollars when they don't have anything to do. And I think that's where they are. I think getting, putting some pressure on the state to in turn put pressure upon them, I think that there are things that they can do that they're not doing.
And everything I'm hearing is that the payment to the state has been, being paid monthly. My understanding is that the real estate taxes have been paid. So everything is being paid, other than any action being taken on the building. But I know the board hears it all the time, so let's try to attack it from the state perspective, Lou, if we can. I want you to try to bring up to date, can you bring the town board up to date on the actual audit, where we're at?
The target date is mid to late May for the Santor CPA group to complete preparation work and submit it to the Morrison Allen. Once they have it, they may have it, depending on whether there's any back and forth or inquiries relating to any outstanding issues. Probably within two to three weeks, if they have it through their care process, it'll be done, but that's a little serious.
I know that the Santor... I know the Santor group is working hand in hand with the Larson group, and Tamika's going to be on top of that also. I know it's a, you know, I've been back serving for 10 years, and every year I would talk and say, let's get this audit done in a timely fashion. And this year, I really thought we were on track to have it done, but it's further from where it's ever been. And I want to apologize to everyone up here, I want to apologize to the town of Elton, because this is unacceptable that our third-party audit is not done in a timely fashion. This should be done every year at the latest in December. It shouldn't be all the way into May, and it should be not, it's something that can't be tolerated. And I know that it'll be done in the future in a timely fashion. And one of the questions that this has really raised to me is, and it sounds a little corny when I say this, I know we got CPAs on the, on the town staff now, is that, you know, I have my own personal accountant. Charlie, you have an accountant. Gene, you have an accountant. I don't know why the town of Elton doesn't have an accountant, per se.
Well, we're hiring someone.
Well, that's where I'm getting at.
To Tamika, she has a degree in accounting.
Yeah, I think it's great to have that, but I know with my business, I have my accountant come to my business every month and keeps me up to date, makes sure everything's all together. Let's just make sure that we're keeping it month to month, instead of having it later out there like it has. Because it's getting to the point now, I'm totally embarrassed by it, and it just doesn't, it hurts.
One of the things that I did following September 30th, April, was the deadline, and I contacted Department of Legislative Services to find out if there'd be any fiscal impact on the town by submitting it late. And the answer was that as long as we submitted after April 30th, it shouldn't affect any funding from the state. It would only be by the state legislative auditors put into the next year's cycle for review. But anyway, I was worried about losing state aid, and it definitely won't be affected. So it won't hurt taxpayers of this town in terms of revenue.
Well, and the audit itself, it just, once you get the third party to look through it, it just makes sure all of our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed. And the last thing I want to bring up, we had a, not getting into a lot of detail about our closed meeting that we had last, last meeting, I guess. We had met with our project, one of our projects that's going on, and there was a request that to make these larger projects work, and we get the product that we want out of this. It certainly seems like there's been some additional costs related to these projects. And, you know, it's a tough time, you know, it's a tough time on all of us. I mean, I saw the other day where if you bought the same house two years ago, your payment's about $850 more a month than it was just two years ago with the interest rates. That was only a $400,000 house. The fact is, we don't really have any $250,000 houses here in Elton anymore. I don't even know if we have any $300,000 houses. So it's important for us to get some affordable housing for our community the quicker than later. And I guess, in a roundabout way, in 2017, we brought a ordinance in, seven dash 2017, and that waived the hookup fees for our community for two years. It was a stimulus program that we put together, and at the end of the day, I would tell you, I don't know if we got any additional people that came on board and built a house or hooked in, but you know, it stirred up a lot of interest. It stirred up projects like the Southfields project that is moving forward, that you can see the dirt being moved out there. It stirred up a lot of good economic development. So I'm not asking the town or the board to vote on any of this right now, but I am going to ask Louis to create an ordinance very similar to ordinance seven dash 2017, where I'd like to waive the major facility fees for residential for a period of two years, ending at my term, June 1st, 2026. Now, I don't need a vote right now, but I'm going to ask Louis to draw that up if I have a consensus that they would strongly consider that.
Before you do that, you want to have a formal letter of Southfield Development Capital Development requesting that, huh? Simply a verbal request, that's too serious, it could be over $4 million involved.
No, but what I'm asking, I can't, you're saying that I can't ask you to do an ordinance?
No, I'm going to do that. I'll go to amendment.
Yeah, okay. And then we would ask that, and now, listen, I don't know if my board's going to support that or not, but I'd like to at least get the ball rolling to take a look at that. Now, along with that, something that we have to have done, and I'm going to task our newest member of our team over there, Tamika, with this, is that we need a capital improvement plan, because when you waive hookup fees, there is consequences, 100% there's consequences on this, is that you won't have these hookup fees to do projects in the future, and those projects being pump stations, doing clarifiers for your wastewater treatment plant or your water plant, and those are important projects for the long-lasting of the town. But I need to see that, I think we need to see that. Currently, we have, I think, close to $4 million in our major facility money that's very similar to what it was in 2017. Now, we used a lot of our money to fund a lot of these projects that we've had, but the fact is, we still got a lot of major facility money in the kitty, and we don't have a plan for it. So I want, as much as I want to ask all these people to give us more money and more money and more money, I just don't think it's right for all that money to be sitting into an account.
The amendment, I mean, not the amendment, modification to the treatment plan itself for just another ring and clarifiers in excess of $20 million. So the purpose of the major facility fund for sewer is to build the reserve in order to do that. Probably never raise that kind of money, but you can raise enough money for debt service.
Yep.
And if you don't have the debt service funds available, you have to take it out of the sewer funds. That will significantly increase the cost of everything.
You're 100%, you're 100% right. So I'd like to see a capital improvement plan, and if that outer ring is something that we want to do in the next three to five years, I'm all in to put that extra ring on, 100%. I love growth. So are you guys all right with that in general?
For introduction, or just for discussion, or Louis?
What was that again?
What are we doing?
I'm asking to start the capital improvement plan, and then I'm going to bring in ordinance for the next meeting, very similar to seven dash 2017, and I want the board to consider it for introduction at the next meeting.
Yeah, I personally can't move forward with one without having the other.
Understand.
At all, okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Right, and I, for one, am definitely willing to consider, but we have got to have more discussion on this.
Very good, thank you. All right, now, this is the time of the meeting we open up the floor for the good of the town of Elton. Margie, come on down.
Margie Blystone, 14 John Adams Lane, Elton Arts Entertainment Chairman. I wanted to let everybody know about Friday night. We've got our first Friday event. That means gallery openings at the college, where they're having a pottery sale and their capstone projects, and the Expressions of Healing at the Cecil County Arts Council. And we're very excited that the Palatine Page is having their grand reopening event, so please stop in at 5 o'clock, we're going to do a ribbon cutting there, and everybody can meet Tatiana, and they're going to have some authors there for signings, and there will be a pony there, so that will be part of our Cinco de Mayo event too, which is very exciting. We have about 17 vendors that are coming, there will be tacos, food vendors. We have a DJ, we have piñatas for both adults and kids. It's going to be a ton of fun, we're very excited to also be welcoming back Ballet Booklorico, who performed last year and was, I mean, beautiful costumes, amazing dancing, so they are going to be back again this year. Cinco de Mayo starts at 5:30, goes till 7:30, we have the galleries open from 5 to 8. So lots of wonderful things going on this Friday night, we hope they'll join us for that.
Margie, do you know what time the dancers will perform?
6:30, right around 6:30. They have to get their entire troop from Wilmington down here for traffic and everything, so...
Is North Street going to be closed off?
Yes, we will have the street closed from Bow Street, Main Street will be closed from Bow up to Church Street, and we will have just the part of North Street closed from Main to the municipal parking right there beside the musical.
So from there on up, you'll have parking?
Yes, we will, yeah, from there, you can park at like the Opera House parking lot, that's a good place to park, also the Courthouse parking lot, and there's the few spots there back behind the musical, and that means a lot.
Okay, but the ribbon cutting's at 5, and the dancers are at 6:30?
6:30, between 6:30 and 6:30. 6:30, between 6:30 and 7:00 because, again, they have to get their entire troop into town. So you're very welcome and thank you again. I will let Alicia, our executive director, Alicia Calhoun, know about your gratitude for evening excellence.
Thank you.
She's currently in the leadership training at Cecil College. So I think she's got like three more weeks of that, and then she'll be back here at town meetings.
Margie, is the, so Secco de Mayo is going to be celebrated on Friday?
Friday night, yes.
Okay, so is there a May 4th event? May the Fourth be, the Fourth be with you? Anything going on?
We did that a few years ago on, on May the Fourth. We had a May the Fourth be with you, but.
Earl bought his Darth Vader outfit he wants to wear.
Did he? Yeah, no, we're too busy with Secco de Mayo right now. So I would, I would say. But if we get another Friday night, May 4th, that was a lot of fun. We did that several years ago.
That was fun.
I think maybe next year might be the May 4th.
Yes, so we have a lot of things coming up. We've got a car cruise on the 17th. We've got the Memorial Day Parade on Memorial Day. We have Jump into June coming in, in the first Friday in June. Dog's Day of Summer is coming up. The Juneteenth event, I've been working with Ms. Shirley Simmons at Wright's AME for that. And we're very excited because we have Bernard Purdy coming to town for that event. He's going to be performing, so that has been confirmed. And we are working with the college on getting sound equipment. And he will be performing at 1 o'clock in the gym on June 19th at the Juneteenth event. So we're super excited and making some, some additional plans to really welcome him back to town. And he is doing that for us because he's not asking for any money in return. We're paying his band members, but, and paying for him to have a hotel here. But he wants to perform for us, just in gratitude.
You're talking about the June of the night, the Juneteenth?
Yes, at that, at that event. So, all righty, I think that's all I have right now, but we're pretty busy.
Thank you, Margie. I would also like to thank you and congratulate you and the Alliance on the wonderful event last week. And also for your help at the Fishing Rodeo.
Thank you.
And that goes for the Elton Police Department as well. I try not to leave anybody out when I'm talking about everybody who helps, but it's, like I said.
There are a lot of people there.
And you guys are all big help.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say today for the good of the town?
Actually, Mayor, I do. Just a reminder, May 14th is the municipal election here at Town Hall. However, the primary election is May 14th at the county building. There's also, early voting starts tomorrow. But I wanted to remind everybody that you cannot vote for the county election here at Town Hall, nor can you vote for the municipal election at the county. You have to vote in two separate places.
Very good. Is there anyone on the Zoom meeting that has anything to say for the good of the town?
I see Jane Bellmire here, and I know she's an employee of the WIG, but I just wondered if the WIG was going to make separation about the upcoming voting because you do have the Elton, which will be small in nature, but you also have the primaries, which will be up under, so.
Hey, Jane, hopefully you're listening. I see you on there also. Commissioner Givens made a point. Maybe you could put something in the paper that the Elton municipal elections are here at Town Hall. And I know the primary elections will be at their polling place. Hopefully, you heard that.
Will do.
All right, hey, thank you. Thank you, Jane. Pat, did you have something you wanted to say?
I just wanted to thank Commissioner Massimino for all the hard work that he put into the Fishing Rodeo. There's, when you come down there and you see everything, a lot of people think, oh, wow, this is really cool. But nobody understands the amount of work that goes into it months ahead of time to make the event as successful as it was.
Very good. And, you know, I'm not, I, I think yesterday I went by Town Hall, or by the Alliance office, and you were measuring for a food truck? Now, listen, you got to keep Crave in mind every once in a while for a food truck down here. That'd be great to have you down here. All right, with that, meeting adjourned.